The flag will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Revival the kingdom in power and glory forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We passed a sheet around for public comment. Did anybody that wanted to make public comment, did you sign in? And the other three, everybody has to sign in.
Okay, public comment, Sheriff.
(inaudible) November 4th, we have a dedication. Sammy Gilchrist, jail, and we'll be sitting out in the place here for thirty years to date. He's killed.
Texas Association of County Superior's attendance presented to the Honorable Jan Harrell, Wilson County Department of Federalize and Justice, specific to the statutory requirements that Texas government codes, Chapter 2256.2008, of the Public Fund Investment Act, 2013 Conference on the County Investment Academy, June 10th through the 12th, 2013, Gutiardia Gauz, Texas. Dean Terry, congratulations, Jan Harrell. And also a certificate of attendance, Jan Harrell at the 41st Annual County Treasurer's Continuing Education Seminar, May 13th through the 16th, 2013, Sheridan Austin, the capital of Austin, Texas. That's signed by Sheridan Runge. And Honorable Jan Harrell, 41st Annual County Treasurer's Continuing Education Seminar, May 13th through the 16th, 2013, Sheridan. So, the next one will be signed by Jan Harrell. I have four of approved bonds, Victoria Delmills and Aurora M. Garcia. Motion. I have five extension activity report. Law with extension activity report, had the opportunity to attend the awards conference last night, very rewarding to see all the young people there with their accomplishments and the boy. Very, very good. Thank y'all very much. Thank y'all for your attention.
But if you're seniors too.
Yes, sir, but we got a lot of, a lot of young kids coming up into the program too. Item six, 9:00 AM vote hearing, collection of fine art pieces, filing civil suit, and this course to be used for restoration, preservation, records, and this is further off. Mr. Thomas, Mr. Whitey, all papers.
All right.
Item seven, Michael A. Abbott, make it a vote. Item A, consider take action on petition and the opposition to the Wilson County Texas authorizing and approving the issuance of certificates of obligation. Do you see that?
Yes, sir.
And I verified the vote, so.
This is the original of the petition here. This is Olga's work copy. It's our voter registrar that went through and there are the signatures on there. And this is the report. And Miss Olga is here, but this is the written report that was handed to me, Judge.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the report. Item 9, 2013, Eva Martinez, County Judge, Michigan Court, subject making a vote petition. The petition in opposition of Wilson County Texas authorizing and approving the issuance of certificates of obligation was received in my office on Thursday, August 8, 2013, 4:20 PM, verification of valid registered voters in Wilson County. Total registered voters in Wilson County, August 8, 2013, twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred seventy-nine. The required amount of valid signatures needed to be five percent of the total of thirteen eighty-four. The total sheets pages submitted were one-seventy-one. The total number of signatures was submitted fifteen forty-seven. On verdicts, verification, there were nine signatures that were in suspense, twelve that were counseled, and one-hundred-and-twenty were not registered voters. After verification, the total of valid registered signatures is fourteen oh-six, which is a difference of twenty-two more than is required for the petition to pass. All the M. Herrera registered voter register. Item B, pending this on a sufficient date, enter this in order for said petition. Commissioners Court may order a bond election pursuant to local government code two-seven-one point zero four seven. Put on there so we could go ahead and we'd have to have it in by the twenty-sixth, is it twenty-sixth? However, we'll have to have more language added to it, and would you like to explain that to us?
Well, certainly, Judge, thank you. For the record, I'm Bob Henderson. I'm a Harvard C. Capital Markus, one of the financial advisors to the county. In light of the petition that was submitted in compliance with the Certificate of Obligation Act 79, we will need to call a bond election. The bond election order, though, has to be very specifically worded in connection with the Constitution. We've got to have a lot of information that Eva Martinez is going to be picking up for pursuant to year nine, you know, the election judges and polling sites and all of that. So, we will need to come back with an official bond election order, honor for the twenty-sixth. The twenty-sixth is your regular Commissioners Court meeting day. It would be our expectation just to have an order prepared by the attorneys for the court's consideration on the twenty-sixth. I think what this election, what this agenda item does is give the court, you know, the opportunity to direct the attorneys to go ahead and prepare that order.
Would it be prudent for us to call a special meeting to do that prior to that?
I don't know that it really makes any difference. It certainly can if you think that it, you know, has any public relations value, you have to recognize those citizens that signed the petition. I think your accepted petition does that. If you want to come back, a special meeting, you certainly can, but the law says honor for the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth is your regular reading, anybody?
Anybody.
I mean, if we do it that day, it doesn't have to be in them. I mean, we order it that day, I mean, it doesn't have to be someplace. No, sir, no, sir. It only has to be on the record that the county called it honor before that day.
And on this order, when you do the, on that bond, the way it's forwarded, that's going to be on that bond, is it three separate projects or all the three projects altogether?
Well, the petition was submitted to force the election on a certificate of obligation, so as a technical matter, it's not even going to be a bond election, it's going to be a certificate of obligation election, you know. So far as the burden's concerned, six and one-half does it up, we're having a question. The certificate of obligation order had all of those lumped together. Now, the court could, at its discretion, break it into propositions if it wanted to, but the order per the petition is a call election on a certificate of obligation, which was one action for an amount not to exceed eight and a half million dollars. Now, we could also lower it at eight and a, another court had actively discussed on me doing eight and eight versus eight and a half, and it was left at eight and a half to give you that additional latitude. But, you know, we can discuss that if you like, if you've got those kinds of questions, maybe we could have a special election, have a special meeting, and have the attorney come down and discuss those alternatives with you. The fact you said it was always, always one bond. Yeah, it was always one single issue.
It wasn't split up.
It wasn't, it wasn't split up. And, and the way the Certificate of Obligation Act read the petition was submitted to force that issue to a election. Now, you can, you know, the, the law, I'm a citizen of the national law, please, please nobody write my name down. But, I think that the law would allow the Commissioners Court to call a regular bond election and break it into propositions if you wanted to. I think we still, because the court, as a practical matter, never looked at the tendency to order an eight. Anyway, we could change the amount from eight and a half to eight. So, there are some changes that could be made. We certainly had the latitude to do that.
Because I don't even know if by the twenty-sixth, we're going to have five numbers. Three particular projects, you know, called by.
By the way, you can, you know.
You have to, you have latitude.
But I think they can, as far as what we are looking at.
But, we think, said of, they on the twenty-sixth, we're going to have a special meeting.
Twenty-sixth works for me, but. You know, we're, no different. Either attorneys are going to put it together.
(inaudible).
Let me, let me, a second.
(inaudible).
Yes, the attorney will give us specific, the language for the twenty-sixth.
Item A, item eight is a blue point.
Judge, I think we all, on item eight, you know, just take proactive action to not sell the certificate of obligation and recognition of petition. That way, we, I think we put an end to that process and we have a table.
Item eight, Rick Stapp, heat, Delgado, by Costa L.L.P., considering an action of order, authorization of issuing, of an amount not to exceed eight point, eight-five, eight point five million, Wilson County Texas Certificate of Obligation Series 213, will not be total of certificate obligation to go to the vote, based on.
We want to have a, we want to move not to sell. Not to sell the bond.
In a second. Close paper. Going back to item seven, we had two people sign up to speak on item seven, that'd be Joanne Brektell.
Oh, you can all access.
And Michael Abbott.
Yes, sir. Sorry, the molds got to me last night when stuff blew in, but anyways, general consensus from the people that we've encountered in the county, that a separation of projects would be appreciated by the people for your consideration. Instead of a package process, there was a consideration from the court to ask for a separation of the projects.
Well, we also been in contact with constituents since there's very many people wanting to go, you know, I mean, so, unless, we want to back up, take, retake action on that, whatever it is. Item nine, Eva Martinez, county clerk, election of polling site, bond election, one of the elections, certificate of. Early voting ballot board, resolution board, U.S. Marquis, county clerk, in there to contact the San Antonio River Authority, and just area.
On item number nine, Judge, what we'd like to do, since there is a little bit of time, we'd like to come back to the next meeting and have a little sort of election decision and rescind the first order, the consolidated everything if we can at that time, and to open up all the voting processes versus the consolidation, and we'll give you a list of those names. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, Judge.
Okay, and that way we can deal with all of it together. Okay?
Item K, Eva Martinez, county clerk, contract with San Antonio River Authority to conduct their election on November 5th, 2013.
They're planning on having a election, sure the person that's on the ballot, John Turner, if they don't, they're going to, but they're talking in terms of time, we're telling them, it's okay with you all.
That'd be the same one, actually.
Yes, and ballots count. We were thinking that if it was all over by law, we'd just put it all in the same ballot, because it's countywide, everything's countywide.
And then if the cost would be shared then by the, or we would, we would do the cost and you would contact the river.
Right, and they would have to pay their part.
Are there any other questions or anything on the ballot at that time?
The amendment, but we don't have a list of twenty-one, we have not given them yet, so I don't even know how many numbers there are. We checked with them on the 79th of July, new one ready. Okay? If I do have it ready, and we do have the information, that the next meeting I'll have that for you all. Okay?
Amendment will be on the table.
No, we wanted to have everything on one ballot, because it's countywide.
Item eleven, public hearing, courthouse annex, one, two, three, update, comments, questions.
Okay, back, back, I'm sorry to get in my, um, um.
On item eleven, public hearing, courthouse annex, one, two, three, update, comments, questions. This is a public hearing, the public may weigh in, anything they have to comment on. We had these meetings for the last several months. Every meeting was had to gain public input and to answer any questions the public might have. Been very little interest during that time. We held one nighttime meeting, and one individual here opposed to the courthouse only, he was for the other project, but he was supposed to be soaring the old courthouse. That was the only input at, at that nighttime meeting, so if there's no questions or comments, we'll move on to.
Judge, may I make, um, just address what Mr. Abbott requested a minute ago, from the standpoint of him being broken out. We will have, we do have the information available, the amount of money that we're talking about spending is not just some arbitrary number. We, we will have amounts that will show what the anticipated amount is for each of the three phases, that that's really not a problem. The issue is being able to move money, because one phase might run a little short and one might run a little over. But as far as being able to have available the anticipated cost for a phase, that is not a problem. We have that as a consideration.
Or the criminal justice facility and the courthouse, we've gone out, or a few, two, two entities responded. They both have met with the committee and have, are, are, both of us asked to submit what they perceive to be the cost. (inaudible). So, that's what we have.
Judge, I'm sorry, do, did, I understand, do you need to sign up for this public hearing input, or that is open now?
It's open now.
Do we, did we?
You can sign in now, if you'd like to make time in.
Turn this on now, real quick.
But it's a, this is, you don't really have to sign in on this one, this is a, yeah.
But just wanted to make sure before I interrupted. I'm Monica Florson, and many of you know me, I'm a lifelong resident here, and I just wanted to thank you for all of your input and all of your research and trying to bring together what needs to be done for the county. I'm a huge job. I just want to continue to support you in whatever way I can, and also just to tell you, I hope and encourage you to continue moving forward as best as you can with any of these projects in a way that would really be beneficial to the county. But I, I would like to ask you to definitely consider the possibility of us maybe getting some monies from the historical commission, which would help us with the courthouse, maybe restoration, and would maybe free us up with these monies that you are looking to get to help with the annex and all of these other projects. I know we have a huge road ahead of us financially, and perhaps that would relieve some of the financial pressure that we're feeling and trying to get the projects done. So, once again, thank you for what you've done, and I look forward to seeing lots of things happen in building and construction, us being able to be pretty solid in the future.
We, we have pursued, you know, those grants, things in the legislature, very sparsely funded courthouse rest, there's very little money available at this time, and, and often cases, it ends up, if you do get a grant, it ends up costing you more requirements that's required for removing annexes and so forth and so on. The first, we met a few years ago, and they wanted the annexes that, which would be Ms. Eva's office and the underground removed from there. If we got a grant for the courthouse, then to remove those annexes would have cost us an additional amount of money to do that, so it's, it's probably prudent to go ahead and move forward the way, the way we're doing it, because the money's not there.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Deanna Phillips, and I'm from the Stockdale area. I would ask, when you have public hearings in the evenings, that you do a little more advertising?
We post them on the agenda, they're on the website, they're also in the paper. And we have meetings very regularly, so people have a concern, they can follow the website and know when the meetings are.
Okay, so that posting is seventy-two hours prior?
Ma'am?
When's it posted? So, seventy-two hours prior?
Nine o'clock before the meeting. So, if we have a meeting on Monday, we post on nine o'clock on July, and we do put it on the website.
Okay, so you, you have to actively go in search of.
Ma'am, we're not going to send notices to everyone.
No, no, I just wondered if there was some other avenue.
Okay, item twelve, suggest take action, Emma Garcia's, Camino Real Community Services Board, reappoint Joanne Brektell as the County Camino Real Community Services Board to speak.
Good morning.
Our Camino Real Board is comprised of nine members, one representing each county that is part of the center area. Joanne Brektell has been serving in the capacity, Joanne is a very active member, attends our meetings, attends different conferences to get herself very well educated on the issues and the directions that services such as ours are going to. Her term of office is ending at the end of this month, and we're here to request the court be considering her reappointment for another two years of service.
All right, let me just, Morala, all right. Come on in. I may just say that I've known Ms. Brektell for many years, and her volunteerism in many areas has been, in fact, her husband served on board at ACOF for us, and can't tell you how much we do appreciate your service and genuine care and heart of the people.
And that is very reflective of her commentary and feedback to our management teams, and she helps provide guidance for us, we just look at many years of experience with persons with disabilities, persons with mental illness, and she has really been a great support member and a treasure to us. So, thank you.
I would just like to say thank you. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with Emma and Velma and Camino Real to provide services for the mental health and the persons with disabilities, intellectual disabilities for this county, to make sure that we're represented and that we have the services that they need. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your service, ma'am. Okay, item B, year, county match presentation.
One of the many duties that I have is to come to board Commissioners Court on an annual basis on behalf of our board to request ongoing match contribution. It is a requirement that we have, because we are recipients of general revenue funds, and you should receive the package from my office giving you the backup information. Just want to give you a little bit of, a real short summary here. The document that looks like this speaks to the numbers of persons that we've served in your county. We're still active in fiscal year thirteen, it does not end till this month, so I have final numbers for fiscal year twelve, and then I have a breakout on a, on a quarterly basis for the numbers of people that were serving in this fiscal year. For fiscal year twelve, we served four-hundred-and-twelve adult persons with mental illness. We served one-hundred-and-twenty-three children in our M.H. Children's Program. We have ninety-six persons with intellectual disabilities that have been provided services through our I.D.D. program. We have a, which is intellectual and developmental disabilities. I forget that we live in a world of acronymism, to me, it's just, it almost becomes a word, so I apologize for not defining it. Then we have our early childhood intervention, what we call ECI, that's our zero-to-three program, where we work with families that have a childhood disability, so we try to mitigate those disabilities and delays as much as possible by providing early intervention, and it's just a wonderful program. We have one-hundred-and-five families that we have served, for a total of seven-hundred-and-thirty-six persons that we've served in those, within those programs that were actively enrolled. Just to give you a perspective of the numbers that we serve, agency-wide, we provided services to about five-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-four persons in the nine-county area that were responsible. One of the real critical services that we provide to your county is manning a twenty-four-seven operation for crisis, and that's anybody that is having a psychiatric crisis can call that hotline, and we work real hard at having that one-eight-hundred number posted everywhere, emergency rooms, sheriff's office, schools. We try to inundate the county with that information. It's on our website, it's on our brochures and such, so that anybody that would be in that situation could call that number, and we would activate personnel to go out and address the situation, a bit more into the onsite person-to-person evaluation. We, that sometimes, that activity sometimes leads to hospitalizations of persons, to stabilize a person, whether it be in a private psychiatric hospital or the state mental health facility. In the, so far, we've served, we've gotten three-hundred-and-forty-six calls to that hotline, one-hundred-and-eight of those calls resulted in a face-to-face screening, and there have been seventeen hospitalizations in private hospitals and twenty-seven hospitalizations to the state mental health facility. We work very closely with your judiciary as well as the sheriff's office to facilitate transport, safe transports to, to these facilities. The second document that I have for you is one that looks like this, and that's just the, a, a comparison. The second document that I have for you is one that looks like this, and that's just the, uh, comparison of the various, uh, counties and their contributions, and I'm very proud to say that in the thirteen years that I've been in this position, when we started, we did not have everybody at a hundred percent of their match contribution, and for, uh, for the first time, we have everybody at a hundred plus, a hundred percent plus. We've provided either a, uh, in-kind match contribution, such as Wilson County, they provide us, uh, you provide us with several buildings, and we take the fair market value of those buildings, and that becomes your contribution. And, uh, Wilson County is at a hundred and nineteen percent of your match requirement. So we thank you for that, we thank you for your support and your, uh, collaboration. Just want to take one more minute to tell you about some, um, programs that we're bringing onboard. One of the things that has challenged us in all our service areas is that we do not have, uh, like, a crisis residential program that, that step between getting to a, a, uh, facility and what we can do in the community. We are, we have submitted, uh, proposals for projects with the eleven-fifteen waiver, transformation waiver, and we're looking at bringing on the ground, we're still pending final approval, we've had preliminary, preliminary, preliminary approval, we're pending that final approval to, um, uh, have two crisis residential programs in the service area. We're looking at, uh, one being in Eagle Pass, that is our most populous county, uh, has the greatest number of, of, uh, persons, so we're looking at one there, and then we're going to be looking at, at, uh, either, uh, consideration in a central location for the second residential program. We're looking at expanding our crisis services, and we're also looking at implementing some integration, uh, of primary care and behavioral healthcare. So we've got some exciting, uh, projects on, on, um, the, uh, horizon that we're hoping brings better services to your community. Another thing that we've done in the last couple of years is gone into, um, contract with a VA, and, uh, we have had about sixty, uh, ve- uh, sessions for veterans that come to our clinic, and we connect them with their doctor at the VA through the use of our video conferencing equipment. That has brought the opportunity for that veteran to come to a location in their community and access services that would have been a barrier to them getting into the San Antonio area and, and mitigating any transportation difficulties. And we're very proud of having done that, we do not make money off of this, it is not, uh, for that intent, it is to open access. Uh, we also have a Veterans Peer to Peer Support Group that meets regularly here in this area, and it is very well attended. So those are just, uh, additional programs that we've brought online for the county.
Did you get any feedback from the meeting over here at the old hospital here in Floris?
Uh, we've been having the focus groups, we're having, now that he's completed them, we're gonna have to sit down and, and, uh, uh, a summary of all of that, but...
I realize that probably Abbot's County is more central to this side of the, of, of the area that you serve, but that, that facility is, I, I don't know who owns it or the cost of it or anything like that, but it just sits there and begs for something like this, because of the rooms, the way they're configured and, and everything, it'd be a, a great facility. What year did you come on?
Uh, two thousand.
Two thousand. Since Ms. Velma's been there, it's, it's been, been a very professional, uh, caring way, and, uh, if you was here before, you, you know, she's made. And I, I said this before, but I'd just like for, for people to understand that we do try to, to, um, the, the cost this year without the match would have been ninety-four thousand, correct?
Correct. Yes, it would have been, for Wilson County, the required match is eighty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Okay. There was a group of citizens in this county, on their own, that had needs for the services, purchased a building across from what used to be the Autry Meat Market, that used to be an auto dealership there. They borrowed the money from GBE C to purchase that building. They then, then donated to the county to utilize as part of our match. The county purchased what used to be the Old Connolly Pharmacy. We had a DA that had, one of this county DA's offices had actually been housed in another county at their expense prior to that election. After that election, we, we purchased the Connolly Pharmacy over there, cut it in half. Half of it is now for the, uh, Administration Office of, uh, Comino Real. And those two projects meet our match, so, over the nu- that number of years, uh, I think it started off around sixty-some thousand, and it's now like eighty-some thousand. It's been a very famed thing for the county, and it's, uh, and like I said, there was a lot of citizens involved in, in purchasing that other, and, uh, Ms. Burma knows their names and things, but it takes me all of them that was involved in it, and, uh, many of them not, not around anymore that passed on, but, uh, their, their, their work and efforts need to be acknowledged, and, uh, we appreciate it.
And there's one more group of citizens that got together many years ago, and they purchased, uh, that, uh, Old Telschek's.
Kelsey's, uh, hard, uh, grab this story.
And they donated, they chose to donate that facility to Comino Real directly rather than to the county. That's what that group, that who purchased that location, and that's where we run our, our date program for persons with intellectual disabilities. So we've had wonderful, wonderful support from this county, and we truly appreciate it, the, the recipients of services, uh, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Motion to, uh, Commissioner, uh, final second. Gommete, I'll take it.
All right.
Item thirteen, two thousand fourteen, Sheriff's Office fees.
We present the fees to the sheriff and, uh, their kids. They would like to keep the fees the same, but they would like to add an additional fee that a statute allows. And it's a fee for the sale of real estate by virtue of an order of sale, and the, um, sheriff's office will charge two percent on that. If that's agreeable, that is the only change on there, it's an additional fee allowed by law to charge.
Motion, Commissioner Gommete. Marial, I'll take it.
Excuse me, Judge. Excuse me, Judge, can I? And then Wilson. Sure, Wilson meant that paper, your reference, that's what, uh, office controller. Requirements, you get it. We've come, we added an additional fee when you approved that one. We're ready for it.
Uh, fourteen, Edwin Baker, Health and Public Safety, discuss and approve.
Like a motor.
She was fighting the fire yesterday.
We got a little rain Saturday and Sunday in parts of the county, but I don't think it amounted to anything.
Not my part.
The paper that I handed out is a reflection of yesterday and their predictions for how dry it is yesterday, and they pretty much called it a little overshot.
And we go ahead and pass this, my friend.
Well, I was hoping it'd just be on the agenda with healthy, didn't it?
Motion, President Gommete.
All right. You're just open.
Item fifteen.
They, they wish to meet with the young people, the young people participating in the process.
Item sixteen, who has Martinez County Clerk for outfield fifteen thirteen, request to change the charge of ten dollar RMA records managing archives, taking official public records only. Currently charged by our respective nine-one-two thousand thirteen, would not collect until one-one of fourteen.
Uh, this is a similar fee like the one that the district clerk asked for. We have been charging the five dollar fee for a number of years, and we've used that for restoration projects. Uh, it would come in handy, uh, it's only charged to people that file the documents, if they did not file a document, it would never affect you. Um, the law reads that we can go ahead and request Commissioners Court to give permission to do that. We could not find anything in the law that says that since we were, or asking for the additional fee, we have to have a public hearing, and we were gonna ask you that date, we have to have a public hearing on that, really.
I didn't see any requiring it, I, it's a change, it's a temporary change in the fee for both the county and the district clerk, for a set number of years.
For twenty sixteen, yeah.
To, um, to offset the cost of them committing the electronic crime, and the district clerk had requested to be considered in this same fee. I didn't see any requirement
Okay.
in, in the statute for a hearing on that, I, um, we were, we were asking Commissioners Court if they would have suspended that after the motion, but it still has the same posting requirement, just like the sheriff's.
And we, of course, would not collect it till then, we would not start collecting for that. And of course, we would have to let our customers, such as, uh, attorneys and title companies, and put it on the website so that they could know that. It was okay with Commissioners Court. The district clerk is joining in every question.
Gommete, second. Item seventeen, Veronica Rosell, County Auditor, item A, discuss and approve computer usage policy.
I think you all have received the original computer use policy, plagiarized this and pulled it off the computer. Um, I, I've had some comments on it, so I'm gonna make a couple of changes to it. Um, if you have your copy, we're going to be changing, it basically says company, company, company through here, and we'll just change that to county. Um, the other item that we wanted to change was on the very bottom of the first page, where it's talking about personal use of the computer, and where it basically says however employees are expected to demonstrate, demonstrate a sense of responsibility and not abuse the privilege. We're going to add example of unallowed use of county computers includes streaming music, watching television programs, and pornography, et cetera. Um, another change we're going to make is on the very top of the second page, there's a sentence in there that talks about, um, Wilson County does regularly gather logs for most electronic activities, our monitoring employee communications, duh-duh-duh. Talks about recording telephone calls and telephone numbers dialed. We do not record telephone calls or record telephone numbers dialed, so I'm gonna scratch that out, okay? Other than that, that's it, so if you all want...
On that streaming music, there's probably a lot of things that, that's kicked up by the...
Well, and, and, uh, I don't have a problem with music at the desk, I was, I was surprised when, when HTS informed us that streaming music on certain ways uses up bandwidth, and an enormous amount of bandwidth. And I was like, oh, that's not good. Um, I have a problem with people listening to the radio.
So if you want to get it, get you a radio, it doesn't get there.
Yeah, or bring your iPad and, you know, do your own streaming.
Well, that's different than, hey, get your radio.
Yeah, I have a problem with people listening to the radio, I, I actually do it myself sometimes, but...
I thought you were gonna say get a banjo.
Monica. But anyway, it does take up a lot of bandwidth, and so we're asking people to refrain from that, and of course, watching TV is your desk. Unless it's under lunch hour, I have a problem with that anyway. Um, so, we would ask that you approve this, and then we will go ahead and send it out.
Motion, Commissioner Foul, Mr. Marial, I'll take it.
All right.
Item B, discuss and approve request transfer of two thousand dollars from salary of an agent who resigned to office furniture to purchase table chairs for extension office seminars and functions.
The extension agent has had an employee who has resigned, and they're not planning on replacing her for a little while, and, um, they are in need of tables and chairs to conduct seminars and programs. So, since they don't have any money in their furniture budget at this point, we were wondering if it would be okay to pull, pull salary and use that to do that.
Are you, are you rectangle or tables or round ones?
These are rectangle.
Oh.
These are the, uh, short educational.
I was gonna say, Commissioner Foul has found a, at a government agency, a lot of round ones that were, had a, had a, but, you know, but it, we won't wait, here's what best business needs.
I think they have looked into, uh, purchasing tables through the, and, and they were saying they could find them at a very competitive price, and they were brand new.
Motion, Commissioner Foul, Commissioner Gommete, I'll take it. Item C, discuss insurance coverage on county vehicles.
This is just for information, um, we were checking in, one of the things that the extension officers have been requesting was a vehicle to transport four-H kids to different functions, and because of that, I started to look into the insurance that the county has on, on county vehicles as far as passengers. Um, we were informed that we don't have medical insurance on non-county people in county vehicles. Um, so, we started kinda looking into it a little more, because that concerned me, I, I know, you know, county employees do carry non-county employees in their vehicles. Um, what we've done, we've talked to the insurance, which is with TAC, um, they have given us, uh, it's PIP, it's Personal Injury Protection, um, for the remainder of the year at a no cost to us, and they will also include that next year, um, but it is only five thousand dollars per passenger. So I just wanted to make everyone in the county aware of that situation. So I don't know if transporting four-H children would, would be a good idea.
Well, also what we do is, we, we have policies, uh, whenever we transport through, uh, one-day-four-H programs that, uh, an insurance program, like, we can get with you on that, as well as also enough release liability forms that we have, that we've been doing, uh, long ago.
Do you have any, uh, community services? I don't know, probably you're taking, uh, you wanna sign up for it?
It's still the same situation, right? But is, is that the same policy available?
So, but it's only, uh, the driver, it's gonna be only a county employee driving the vehicle.
Yes, yes.
But I bet it's...
And the passengers are, are only covered for up to five thousand dollars, which is more than we had a week ago, but it's still not a whole lot of money, I mean, you know, break a toe and it costs five thousand dollars, so...
Oh, is, I'm... Your, your, your community service, would you be the same, Mr. Foul?
No, that's different.
It's very different.
It's very different.
Your four-H students, that's a, that's a very different one, they, they...
And I'm, I'm thinking, when he was telling me, it, it's a state program that, that comes out.
They have their own insurance.
Yes. But that notice that you gave was about defensive driving for the employees, are we talking about this? Is this something you wanna try to implement or, or wanna do?
The defi- the defensive driving, for the... Um, you can certainly do that, it isn't, it is offered by TAC for your employees, and I think it'd be a wonderful thing.
Would that, would that give us a benefit for, if, if we, we...
I don't know, I would have to, I'd have to check in, uh, to see, I'm not sure if it would, uh, decrease our premiums or not, but I, I, I'm guessing no, uh, but...
I'd like to zoom in a bit.
It's still...
I think that'd be something building to do.
Good thing to have.
Yeah. I'd like to know more about the program, what, what we commit, and also, if it's something that's on the county on-site or whether we have to send it to Austin.
No, it is, it's, it's on-site.
All right. Item A, discuss take action, I don't know where the company's going, that why, county board, eight thousand fifteen. fifteen, in a local agreement for nine-one-one, public safety answering point services and data base claims.
I think it's Dawn calling, put it on there. I think they went straight to the judge and said, yes.
Did you get it coming?
My understanding is it didn't change in the election, so nobody...
Okay. All right. Item nineteen, Jan Arnold County Treasurer, item A, discuss take action, closing Frost Bank account for commitments.
Okay. Last May, we opened a bank account through Frost Bank that handled our commitments. They told us that unless we opened this bank account, that they would not take our commitments. So we opened the bank account. We have no control over this bank account. They take money out as they see fit. We don't know who it's going for. Sometimes Dawn gets contacted, sometimes she doesn't. And in my conference in May, when we had some of our meetings, we are the only county that is using this Frost Bank account. They, they still bill the counties for that. So I'm asking permission to close this bank account, because we have no control over it. They take out two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars, just whenever they see fit, and we don't see it till it comes to the bank statement, or, you know, then I'll call Dawn, and I'll say, well, Dawn, have you heard, you know, have you heard anything? Did we have any commitments or anything? So it's, I would just like permission to close that account.
And what were the reasons for opening their account?
Because remember back, a couple of years ago, they were complaining that people weren't paying their bills for commitments, so they stated that all the counties would have to go through the Bear County Clerk's office to have this done, and everybody would have to open a bank account. And it had to be done by April or May of last year. And so we did it, and...
And you said we're the only county that's...
Yes, yes, yes.
Have you spoken with them?
With the Frost Bank, Bear County? No, I haven't, not happened.